Thank you so much for coming out. Let's introduce our candidates. First and foremost, we have Tyler Bailey, an attorney with Bailey Law Firm, Jesse Bullard is Vice President of Business for Southern Way Catering, and Crystal Williams is the owner of Uncle Willie's Grocery Store. Thank you very much. It is my day. We wanted to keep this pretty open. We wanted to make sure that this was kind of a loose conversation, but we did have some questions that we wanted to bring to each one of these candidates. And so what I'm going to do is just kind of open it up, and you can each individually kind of take each one of these positions. As I ask a question, feel free to answer at will. Everyone will get a chance to be able to speak up and at least say their piece on each one of these questions. It won't necessarily be a talking over each other, or combative in any way, shape, or form. Just a chance to get to know where they stand on some of these issues. One of the first issues that we wanted to bring up is the issue of homelessness in our city. So many areas around Colombia, especially as we get into downtown, before Finney Park, there are places that are hangouts for homelessness. One of the things that we are hearing from people in this community is, what sort of resources are we putting into this to be able to reach the homeless where they are? Instead of making the homeless kind of congregated in different places, whether it's Oliver Gospel Mission or in that area, what can we do to combat homelessness in the city of Colombia? And we can start with whoever wants to answer.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Tyler Bailey, and I'm the owner of a city eating lunch space, so I speak wide awake, dog, and all sleep. And greens, my peace. But homeless in this or in our unhomed population has grown eventually in Colombia, at least since the pandemic. We've all been asked those questions several times. I recently purchased a new office building when we rented it in the corner of Old Ridge Street. Danny works for the firm Volunteer Room as well. One thing I said is if I cannot, if I can't clean up my office space, stop unhomed folks from always sleeping on the steps, I had no business trying to put myself out to the council to address those issues. I think it can be addressed by two codes. One, we got to start with getting the services to our unhomed population. There are some people who don't, or remain unwilling to go through some of the requirements for some of our housing that we have. I'll support the initiative, the city of Colombia for rapid shelter housing. Make sure we're doesn't underline mental health issues or substance abuse issues. There are also things regarding beautification and just cleanliness of our city that they will also help to plot those numbers. One thing we did is all my office space increased our lighting, changed the landscaping, changed the appearance of the office space. And the city can do the same thing. As a community, we're looking to build Colombia. I think we should really go to beautify our city as well while we're trying to address the underlying recent homelessness. Formal housing, there's all substance abuse and housing first. But to make our city more attractive, it's going to be less likely for people to sleep and loiter and things like that in certain areas. There's a theory about broken windows, which I'm very familiar with. And I agree with them sometimes, but not all. But I will say that when the communities see that people care for it, people are less likely to trash it up. That's what they're intentionally doing. Or if they're not getting the services they need, they'll be more likely to get those services.
Very good.
Yeah, good. Thanks, y'all. I'm Jesse Bullard, running to be your next City Councilman at large. Homelessness is a popular topic. It's one that affects everybody in the city. It affects our neighborhoods. It affects our businesses. And most of all, it affects the first aggression that you see whenever you come into Colombia. Many of our downtown streets see people living there. But one of the things that probably not talked about enough, we all talk about the chronically homeless, the folks who do have mental health challenges or addiction issues. And those folks need, they do, the rapid shelter. The city's taken a step in the right direction there with the 60 power homes that were built. Over 37 people have already been moved into more stable housing from that program. I'm excited to see initiatives being taken. But then the next step is to make sure that those folks have rapid services that can support them in the next step. So that it is a sustainable fix, and I would say very mandate. Probably one of the things that doesn't get talked about enough is the 8,000 folks that are unhomed who are not necessarily chronically homeless. Coming out of COVID, there were a lot of folks who, you know, have deferred rent for almost two years. Most people don't have two years' worth of rent sitting in their bank account, particularly after the challenging times. So that's left those folks doubled and tripled up in friends and family's homes, as well as living hard and other problems. And those are the things that you don't see as much. One of the encouraging pieces of this, though, is the city of Colombia has got some incredible organizations, Transitions, Homeless No More, Oliver Gospel Mission, and just to name a few. Those organizations do this day in and day out. We need to collaborate with those groups to make sure that we're looking at a holistic solution to the problem. And on City Council, what I think that's probably priority one for me is just again to collaborate, work with these others, and make sure that we're coming up with solutions that are sustainable.
I'm Crystal Williams, running for Colombia City Council at large. And on the topic of homelessness, we have to look at a big resource that was taken away from our communities when the Bull Street State Hospital was closed down. In terms of, and that's now being developed. I am a big proponent of development, and there's room for everybody. But when we make a decision in leadership, we have to ensure that we are making a decision to where all of the fallout from that decision will have, we will have answers and solutions from that. And when the state hospital was closed down, that was a big resource that had mental health treatment, drug and alcohol treatment, job placement, family services. All of those things were coordinated into that establishment. But there was not a plan for those continued services in the city that was supported by the state. So my proposal would be definitely to have another structured living facility, not building a new building. We have some that's already in the state cemetery. We have some vacant that were in prison facilities that can be utilized. The state currently pays over 14 psychiatrists over a quarter of a million dollars apiece. That totals to about almost $4 million out of the state budget for psychiatrists. But they're servicing who? Immigrants. So we need to share those skill sets and that wealth to people that are having issues on the street. Jesse talked about a number of people who have had life circumstances that have changed and that are unhomed, living with family matters. So we really owe it to our communities because as we sit here, we can think about all of our own individual initiatives, the businesses that we run, everything that we plan to do in the future. But if we do not address our issues at the root level, they're only going to be exacerbating. And that's where each of you out there have to hold your lawmakers accountable. At the school board, local, state, county, city level, hold your elected officials accountable to make those holistic decisions so that we are not left with fallout that we're still dealing with in our communities yet to this day. In terms of resources for our mental health, we see that this is a pandemic across the United States. We have an issue with affordable housing. That's one of the things that exacerbates homelessness. Okay, so a lot of the vacant buildings and abandoned properties that we need to crack down on, give the property owners trying to incentivize homeownership so that we can close the gap on homelessness. Job placement is a big one. Once we get people treated and up to speed, we need to ensure that they have skills so that some of them can get on a job. Because right now, with our mental health population, a lot of them being on the street, we have drug dealers and pimps that are hanging out downtown every day that are creating issues with people that are mentally ill. So we owe it to our communities. We owe it to everyone in this room to ensure that we elect leaders that are going to make good decisions. All right, and as military has taught me, once you get to those decisions and you see something going to the left or the right that's not right, you refine that decision and try to make the most responsible decision. Because when leaders fail, troops suffer. Okay, so we have to make sure we elect the people that are going to address the issue of homelessness holistically and in detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly looking at the root causes of that. Could we ask that all everybody stand up when they're speaking? Certainly. I think we'd add something to it. Certainly, yeah, yeah, feel free. Along those lines, when talking about some of the root issues of homelessness and being able to tackle that, the collaboration, each of you in a certain way is either high ranking in your business or a business owner himself. How much of a role do you see local businesses playing in being able to help solve the homelessness situation here in our city?
Standing up. I think as a local business owner myself, I think it's a big interplay between the government, local business, and neighborhoods in addressing homelessness. A lot of the problems that I've seen that attract homelessness is dealing with light. Sometimes you have property owners who may not be addressing some of the problems that the property is attracting activity. There's a business, not far from mine, YWTC. He owns property, but he seems to have to be because of no enforcement of some of those issues that are causing other problems for this. Litering on other properties, drug use. And so I think it's really important that everybody look at the interplay of what they should do in their community. The government can't do everything. So business owners, we have an obligation, just like residents do, to take care of their property, address, you know, if there's loitering issues, if there's hiding issues, things that attract criminal activity, loitering. I think that goes a long way. And so as the government's working to try to address these issues, we need to also make sure we take care of our property. And I think that's one thing that as owners and residents can do is help the numbers go down with the problems I was talking about.
I think the best thing that we can do as a community is just that, working together as a community to address these issues. So it's really easy when you have a problem that's been around for a long time and you haven't seen systemic change with that problem. It's easy to just kind of brush it under the rug and continue to accept it for what it is. Homelessness is not a new issue in Colombia. It's been around since I can remember. We have had some tragedies, and I think it made it worse. But as a community, if you see someone doing something that they're not supposed to be doing, call the police. That's what they're there for, to call the police. As a community, we can do something on our own. We've talked a lot about in our local law enforcement, how they're spending their time. So I will probably get into it if we don't. A lot of people recognize that crime in Colombia is higher than it needs to be, and that's been an issue for a long time. Our police officers don't need to be consumed every day, all day long with homelessness. They need to be working on fighting the bad guys and locking people up, and particularly as it relates to gun crime. As a community, you know, I have a property that I just bought a few months ago next door to my office. And there was a homeless camp out there. There was seven people living on the block next door to my property. I had no idea when I purchased the property. Guess what happened the next week? A bulldozer, and we tore it down. The one thing that we can do is not enable the issues, whether it's calling law enforcement, talking about it. You know, out there on Forest Drive, the Walmart on Forest Drive, the general manager walked out with folks who were constantly hand handling on the stoplight. He went up and offered them a $17 an hour position. The guy said, "No, thanks. I can make $350 a day given what I'm doing now." Tax free. If we don't, if we don't do something about it as a community, and we just let, you know, let it happen and let it be around, whether it's selecting the right people, talking about it, making those phone calls, and continuing to push for change, that's where we can, I think that's the most important thing we can do is continuing to work together to be loud about it and make sure that we're pushing for active change.
In terms of business, in terms of business owners, it depends on the type of business that you have. So for instance, and Tyler and Jesse have both covered great points. I have a small grocery store. So one of the things, before I even opened up, my store is on the north side of Main Street. I decided, you know, I'm not selling cigarettes. I'm not going to sell alcohol. I'm not going to sell CBD products. I'm not going to sell anything that I feel is going to exacerbate someone's mental access. Because before I moved into that building, there were homeless patients, some of them sleeping outside. And then across the street at the old Jim or Cadillac dealership. I mean, for the first six months of me being in the business before the property was bought, there were 50, 60 people staying in that building tonight. And so for me, I decided, I said, "Well, I'm going to have different people patronize the business. Let me add to the inventory of healthy food." And so I made that decision as a business owner. But I just had a business owner visit me for five points right before I left the store. And he was telling me about how someone from the street came in and tried to stab him, you know, because he wouldn't give him a free slice of pizza. So it's those things where, I think Tyler might have mentioned it, where business owners are kind of caught in the middle. Where you have someone coming in and they need something, and you know there are resources for them to get it. Okay, am I going to just give them this for them to leave? Or make, or not give it to them for them to become upset? Because I dealt with that as well. A gentleman, I had given him something. I told him, "Let this be the last time that you come in and ask for something for free." Because we have Price Central next door. We have Transitions down the street. He came in that next day. I would give him something. And he, with his bare hands, tore up a big for sale sign, like the big platform sign by the road, took all the remains, dumped it in the driveway of my store so that customers couldn't come in and out. I had two customers that ran out there to pick everything up. And that guy, he walked up to Main Street and walked in the middle of traffic, back and forth. And so I think for a number of business owners, they are a lot older with the, there was a lot older in the Vista. We just had a meeting over there. There was a gentleman that told me there was someone outside of his business calling customers some very derogatory things, racial service, coming in and out of his business. And so for business owners that can minimize certain things that they're selling, you know, to stop the exasperation of certain people that are on medications, their actions and things like that. Law enforcement, Jesse brought that up. That is one of the things that I'm really tough on in terms of leadership because people often ask, "What is law enforcement going to do? What is law enforcement of workers?" I worked in corrections for over 12 and a half years. A lot of my brothers and sisters are law enforcement. And they are, they have to operate in an environment that lawmakers create, okay, oftentimes. And so in terms of having a secure facility, in terms of cracking down on those drug dealers, those pimps that are out there doing illegal activity and transitioning them into job placement after they have served their time to keep them busy, we owe it to our communities to really invest at the root causes in our communities.
And that segues perfectly to our next question because we are going to talk about crime in our communities. And what we can do in terms of a city with law enforcement working with these communities and with businesses and with residents to almost build bridges and to be able to cut down on crime? What are some of the ideas that you see that might be effective in being able to make sure that not only is law enforcement robust, but also effective in stopping crime here in our community?
I think that our growing gun crime epidemic amongst our youth is the biggest issue facing Colombia. If you just look at the numbers, Paul Speriora just wrote, I believe, the majority of gun crime are over 90%. If you look at ages 24 to 15 years old, kids. And then up there, 95% of those are African-American, young African-American men. The problems that are going on are, it's more than just a crime issue. I went on a ride home with the city of Colombia Police Department back in 2020, when I ran. It was a school night. It was probably 10:00 PM or something. And we were out near, off of Prescott Road in North Colombia. And tons of kids were outside. Tons of kids were outside in the street. And that was really eye opening to me, seeing what law enforcement is dealing with. You hear about these crimes and shootings. You're dealing with kids who are going through a lot at home, living in poverty. It's a high crime area. Easy access to illegal firearms and drugs. A lot of bad role models, not enough good role models. And then oil and pot for disaster. So as a community, I think we need to look at ways to address the root causes. And one thing I hate about running for all the few years, root causes too much. The issues that are really causing it, right? We need to raise, kids are at home. We need to have more programming. We need to change our proxy rights system that's going to be more engaging for youth. What kept me focused was the scholarship. I wanted to get pulled off scholarship. So my friend started smoking weed and doing other things. And I was focused on sports. They had their own problems. I learned about growing up. Now, let's have two parents at home who love each other. Not everybody has that. So we can use our proxy rights system to bring things like entrepreneurship and welfare, paid mentorship programs, things that really will keep kids engaged and focused with role models. And I think that's going to help the crime go down. We're all about to teach support law enforcement. They got tough jobs to do. But I think that if we can really address the root causes, we need kids from getting involved in psycho crime, then it knows to really go down. And last thing I do want to say is going back to homelessness. Everybody who's grown up and cares about the society, and I think while we're trying to find a solution, we still need to remember to have the passion. Because a policy is going to be set based on the tone of the people and how the community feels. And everybody's been aggravated by somebody who made you loitering, asks for money, then asks you for money again. You realize that you may have gotten over on you. Let's remember to have the passion while we're addressing these issues.
Yes, so as it relates to crime, we definitely, I'll say this, we've got to do, we've got to do our part, okay? Supporting law enforcement is one. We do have to tell, we have to, when we're recruiting these law enforcement officers, that CPD specifically, no one goes into law enforcement for the day. They're not going to get the biggest paycheck. They're going because they want to help people. If they feel like every time they turn around, they're arresting the same guys over and over and over and over again, it's demoralizing. Nobody wants to go try to put their life in danger every day. So we've, so the revolving door that you hear about, that is, that is part of us. Now, how do we do that as a community, or specifically on City Council? We're not writing laws and bond statutes, but we are appointing city judges, and we do have a voice on City Council to address some of those things. The other thing I will say is that as a community, kind of going back to what I said about crime, we've got to do our part. If you talk to CPD or our local Sheriff's Department, they will tell you that 95% of these gun crimes that are happening with RU, which is extremely sad, they're happening with guns that are being taken out of people's cars. Your car is not a holster. Do not leave your gun in your car locked, unlocked. Don't do it. So that simple task alone that we can all do as a community and remind our neighbors not to do as a community, that would go a long way. Because the other thing that we can do is, if you look at how our city police officers spend their time, a lot of their time, like I said earlier, is spent wasted. They're spending a lot of time on false alarm issues, okay? So, and that doesn't mean don't call the police if you see somebody doing something wrong. Call them. But if you have a business or a home and you have a group of employees, like I do at times, that perpetually forget to set the alarm, use the wrong code, set it off, you know, multiple times a week or even multiple times a day, you need to change that policy and prevent that from happening. Because there's no bigger waste of time than city, our city police officers around dealing with false alarms. Like I said, they need to be addressing these issues. But I will say, it does start at home. We've got to have parents that are keeping their kids out of trouble. The city can have the best parks and best programs in the world, but if the parents aren't keeping those kids out of trouble, we're going to have a really tough task in the end.
I often tell people, I'm in the two professions that I have to qualify on a weapon every year, military and corrections. Never once thought about taking that weapon and turning it and resolving disagreement with another human being, to turn it on, never. And as Jesse and Tyler have both said, it starts in the home. Not only city of Colombia, we as a country, we owe it to our citizens. We have to invest more in family services. Our young women, we have single moms that are out there trying to raise multiple children. And the gang members, raising half of the family. Our young mothers, we need some of them back at that Sunshine Program. We had a Sunshine Program, I think, back in the 80s, where young mothers, young high-risk mothers with young kids could get jobs with the state, okay? I know some of those women that were, that came up in that program. And it changed a whole trajectory of their life and their career. One is an associate warrant. One is almost ready to retire. And so we really need fathers in the home. That's the big kicker here, when we say family. Two-parent family. We need those young men that are out there running the streets. Our prison system, we have 21 facilities. Only two of those are women facilities. The rest of them are men, okay? We need our fathers in the home. And we as a country have to work together to promote that, to ensure that fathers are raising these young men because there's something that men can do that a lot of women can't for a young man. They really need their fathers. I had a four-time felon come talk to me in my store. He's turned his life around. He has a job now. He asked a question, "Why are there more guns in the pawn shop than raids in Germany?" And as Jesse said, now, the race is on to break into cars, take weapons, pawn them off, take pictures, sell the guns, take pictures for status. "I got this many guns. I got that." It's a culture. It's a culture that's being created. And a lot of these young men, they need their fathers. A lot of their fathers locked up, brothers, uncles, all of them are locked up. The cycle has to stop. The cycle has to stop. And that can happen by investing more as a country in our family services. Because a lot of the issues that we see, they intersect and they, it affects everybody. I'll give you the example of breaking into cars. Anybody notice that their insurance rates have gone up? I have. I talked to the insurance company and I said, "I'm going to have to change." Because, I mean, my insurance, she said, "Ma'am, it's South Carolina. There's too many claims. A lot going on." So when we don't take care of the policy of food issues or whatever protocol, we don't work together to invest in our communities, we all are going to feel the effects of it. So we owe it as a country to invest more into our family structure and promote that.
Some of the issues that we talked about so far, there is somewhere the nexus. So if you talk about homelessness, mental health, addiction, crime, all of these types of things, big challenges for our communities and how to address them, no easy fixes, no easy answers, but each of you tremendously qualified, great answers so far. We do want to move this a little along just a little bit because we talk about kids in particular and the types of homes that they're being raised in, but also they're heading off to schools. And those schools need to be safe. They need to be protected. They need to be a place where kids feel safe to learn. What can we do to make sure that our schools are secure here in Colombia?
Well, I was speaking to some kids who were through the section, Pete would haul the other day. And she was telling me a story about a door closing real loud and how her class, they started getting scared and they thought they were going to die. Because they worried they were going to act a shooter or something. Something that I never worried about when I was in school, middle school. We have a culture problem of guns right now. And one thing that I think what we can do to help kids feel safer in school is as a city, look to attacking illegal firearms, getting them even along the street, and looking at ways where we can stop the easy access to firearms for people who do not need them. We have a culture problem that's simply getting worse and worse. So as a community, on City Council, one thing I would like to see, City Council, is aggressive, aggressive, easy access to illegal firearms that are in those shooting streets where, I mean, more shootings, and kids are bringing them to schools, bringing them to one schools, public schools, where kids had access to firearms 10 or 20 years ago. We need to look at how we can address those, so our kids feel safe.
Well, anybody that's been watching the news, we'll leave the original school district one topic at bay right now. But what I think you can see, and what most of us can agree on, is that we've got to do a better job with our school systems. A lot of that we can't, we can't do specifically and directly on City Council. But what I, what we can do is we can acknowledge the fact that so many of our schools, particularly in one of these public schools, is one of the things I love about our community, is that we have community-based schools. Because these schools are in the middle of our neighborhoods. You know, they're not out in rural areas. A lot of them are right in the middle of our communities. And so we can't talk about one thing without talking about, you know, we talk about homelessness and crime at large, and crime at large, beautifying our streets, taking care of our parks and rec department, putting the right investment into these things, whether it be infrastructure improvements, all of that stuff works together. And, you know, if kids have a place that they're going to school and they feel safe, that's where it starts and that's the piece that we can do on the city level. Most of our schools, actually I think all of our schools now have resource officers in those schools and that's in partnership with, I think a lot of those are done through the county. But the city can do its part with continuing to support, support those resources for our young folks. I am, both of my kids go to Satchel Ford Elementary School. I'm proud of the fact that I was also a public school graduate. We've got some wonderful private schools in Columbia as well, but, but the city has got a real opportunity to bolster these, these opportunities for, for grade schools inside of our neighborhoods and our communities and continue to push that forward.
Everything they've said and also laws, 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 laws. It's important for us as a country on a national level to work on both sides of the aisle to ensure that we are creating laws that make our communities safe. Because as Jesse and Tyler have said, a lot of these things intersect, y'all. And we can sit back and say, I know I said that, we can sit back and say, well, these are my set of issues over here, these are my set of issues over here. But at the end of the day, it's like when that flood happened, we all in the same boat. We're all in the same boat. Role models are important, we talk about parenting. I'm 39, I just don't remember my friends having guns. I just don't. I mean, the structure was a little bit different in the home and at the school, we could get popped. But, I mean, let's face it, but I just don't remember them having weapons. So it starts in the home, it starts with parenting, it starts with role model, role model. And it starts with what we're teaching and what we're parenting, what we're teaching our kids. Someone called me and I'm going to break up. Someone called and asked, how, which side are you on about the banning of weapons? I said, hey, I said, it doesn't matter if you put guns in or take guns out. It's what you're, what kids are taught about. It's what they're taught by their family. And we have to teach more unity, we have to teach more working together as people. Because kids, they watch us, they mimic us. Ever heard a six-year-old say something that's surprising? They got it from us. Okay, so we have to work together. We got to work together, we got to show our kids that respect and that love and care. Because I have friends that have hundreds of weapons. I, I shot plenty of weapons. But we don't use them to kill innocent people. And for somebody to come into a school and shoot a bunch of innocent children and teachers, that's something that's coming from here. It's coming from heart and it's not love. So we got to work together as a country. Doesn't matter, we got to teach respect, unity for each other, with each other.
One thing that's been mentioned, you know, before we get to the final question is just the idea of, the idea that it does start at home. And a lot of times, kids, the environment that they're raised in, what they're bringing with them to the classroom. One idea that was mentioned is the idea of supporting families. What can the city do specifically to encourage some of these family-type initiatives to support families? I don't know if it looks like, you know, one fact that kind of stands out sometimes is sometimes the only meal that a child will get is at a public school during the day. What can the city council do to foster and promote healthy families in our community?
My dad grew up in government house in Jersey, New Jersey. My grandfather struggled with substance abuse and mental health issues and was homeless at the time of his death. He was homeless, died on the street. My grandmother would work at night while my, my uncles and dad were there all by themselves in the government house with high crime during the era of the pandemic. It was a rescue for disaster at that time. My uncle's got a lot of crime, on the side of overdose. And my dad got into the program, the Catholic Church, had a lottery system. And one lottery, you got scholarships, those are private school, undergraduate school programs. That changed his life. He became first, first in our family graduate from high school, graduated from college, became a pastor. All, all his kids graduated from college and I'm here before y'all now. And I think that we need to look at things like that as far as, the city needs to look at what's going on in our community as a community problem as a whole, not just a family problem. And so how can we give a kid like my dad an opportunity? I think whether it's transportation from, from school to after-school program and to get home as a mother or parent who's not there, who can't take him there, later programs, weekend programming, transportation, we have to look at ways where we can close the gap because unfortunately, some parents got their own problems, they're not going to be right. These kids who are growing up on the puberty, they're trying to find themselves out, they have a lot of energy, it's easy to get distracted. So I think what we can do is look at ways where we can close that gap, figure out, and how can, we have a kid who has a future, but his parents aren't there to help him, and we don't want that kid having access to firearms and caught in crime, how can we keep them people focused? Innovative programming and making it easy, reaching kids where they are, bringing them to the program, bringing them to the after-school programs, et cetera. I think just changing the way we look at it. I think that there's plenty of people who's laying, that's why the problem is, where as a community, we need to look at what can we do to lower the number of the problems.
All right, if y'all don't mind, I'm going to go positive for a second because I'm starting to get a little, little down. Columbia is, y'all look, I want to be clear about something. I'm running for city council because I've never been more excited to be a part of our community. And when you talk about what are, what we can do in the home, what we can do as families, y'all, we got a great place to live. You know, this rhetoric about Columbia having low self-esteem, been around, you know, for a long time, not a lot to do, the best thing about Columbia is the distance from the mountains and the ocean. How many times have we heard that? Everybody's tired of hearing that, right? We've got, there is more to be excited about the future of Columbia right now than everyone has been, and I'm extremely optimistic about that. When you look at our programs, whether it's youth programs, parks and rec, we've got, we're making things happen. They just put over a million dollars into New Grass, at soccer field over at Owens, Owens Field, we've got hundreds of thousand dollars being poured into our community parks. Those are all very, very, very positive things. We're developing our riverfront. What family wouldn't want to go down to the riverfront instead of being stuck at home and enjoying three different rivers with Class II rapids and Spanish moss? We've got incredible assets here. Our arts community is unbelievable. When I look around the room at people in this, in this, in this room, these are, these are the folks who get it. This is, this is a service above self approach, right? Y'all know what we have here. Y'all know what our resources and what our assets are. And we have a lot to be excited about. So we need to be telling that story and we need to be excited about the things that we've got going forward because that, to me, that's what this is all about. It's making Columbia the best place it can be to grow business, to raise a family, to work, live, to play. And I've been, like I said, I've never been more excited about that than I am right now and looking forward to the opportunity to make it even better.
One of the things that the city can do, I talked about the Sunshine program that the state had, implementing something or maybe just expanding a program, because the city has a plethora, I would just, the city has a plethora of great things going on and a lot of great programs. But we, we want to engage the community as much as we can. We want to make sure people have jobs. For instance, code enforcement, they were cleaning up an abandoned lot that they were complaining about for over five years. They came out there and they, we had a five-man team, because just so you know, code enforcement currently has a five-man team that's on the ground doing mostly everything in the city. They have a lot of inspectors, but not many ground members. And they were out there after they had bush-hauled the whole abandoned lot, they were out there picking up all this trash. And I came out there and I said, we got all these people that can, we can be engaging. We got a number of young people, summertime. We can engage them to find purpose and see the city, see their surroundings in a different light and make them a part of initiatives, community service. That's one of the things that builds character. You know, you all go community service, it builds character, it builds purpose, it makes you look at your environment in a different light and want to take care of it. And so those types of programs, I think Tyler talked about some, are great for families as a whole to become part of their city, to help keep it clean, to help keep it beautified. Also, education, family service programs that talk about anger management, drug and alcohol treatment, domestic violence. I went to a domestic violence event the other day that I think the city was hosting over in the Boop and Watchin Heights community because these are family issues. These things happen at the home, they affect the children, it affects their response to things around them. So family services. Also churches, I don't want to get away from that, everybody has a different religion, but I remember growing up and, I mean, church members, everybody depended on, depended on everybody. If my skirt, my skirt was a little too short, I had somebody in the church pull me to the side and said, Mr. Chris, what's going on today? They used to wear highs, skirts were high stuff. But it's little things like that where your community raises you. It's not just because I was raised by my great aunt and uncle. My mother was a young, very young mother when she had it, right? So I had my great aunt and uncle, they stepped up and said, you know, we're going to go get her some hospital. We're going to take care of her. And they didn't have much at all. But the church, the community, as Tyler said, everybody had a hand in it. And I'm standing before you today, so we can still do it with our young people, but it takes all of us.
Some great insights all around. And, you know, thank you once again for participating. Before we wrap up here, each and every one of you have a tremendous vision. You can tell that your passion for this community is apparent and we appreciate your time being able to cast your vision for the, that large seat here on city council. Again, the election happening November 7th, before we wrap up, last but not least, we want to talk about traffic in the city. In order for the city to get where it wants to go, sometimes there's a little bit of the snag when it comes to trains in our community. What can we do to stop some of the disruptions caused by trains that lead to traffic in the city of Columbia?
Well, unfortunately, I think the city could recruit every new business you could possibly imagine and still would be enough revenue to, to do what needs to be done overnight. So many of our challenges are going to take time. And, and the rail situation is just that, it's going to take time to get those, to get those crossings out of the middle of downtown. It's going to take a lot of money, too. There has been some funding at the state level earmarked for that. We've got to have more. But one thing that we can do, I know the city's already started working on, is, is the quiet zones. So working with the railways so that when they're rolling through town at 2:00 in the morning, they're not blasting their horn. So using those quiet zones to make at least the problem that is, is, is an obvious issue and a challenge for many people in their day-to-day lives, at least it will be quite so obnoxious in the middle of the night.
In my first 100 days, I'm going to remove all the railroads. You know, I was listening to Mayor speak the other day with all South Carolina type of path with industry coming here in the upstate, in the low country, and the railroads are being used as well. So it's a good problem that we're having with the traffic of shipping of supplies and other goods that are being sold and used in other parts of the state, but it's aggravated to those who are here in the business who have to deal with it. Like Mr. Bullard said, it's something that is on city council's mind, it's not something that's not a priority for the city council. It would be a priority for me if I'm blessed with the opportunity to serve the city council a little bit where we can get the funding necessary to make it more convenient for our residents. But it is, I wish I could say I could change it 100 years, but I just said 100 days, not 100 years, I could change it, but 100 days. But it's something that everybody's concerned about and I'm optimistic of working with council, stay in federal government, figure out a way to get it done quickly.
Everything they said, because rerouting, in rerouting those railroads, one of the biggest things to look at after all of that has transpired, which will take time and some collaboration between everybody from the city to the state to the federal government, is making sure that as they reroute, that we have a plan for existing and leftover abandoned railroads. Because we do have a number of communities in Columbia that are dealing with that. Out there off of Veterans Road area, they have those abandoned railroad tracks back there. And what happens with combination of homelessness and abandoned railroad tracks? A lot going on. Some of the neighbors reported seeing people like, you know, starting like bonfire during the winter months. So we have to look at all that leftover metal and wood from those tracks from a conservation standpoint. What, what are, what are we going to do? Is that an avenue to have some green space? How can we take those areas and add to, deposit to their body? So that's something going forward as we transition into rerouting the railroads to have a more ease flow of traffic with existing pieces that's left over. What do we do with that to add to our green spaces and green energy?
Again, the camera goes toward the out-large seat, Justin Bullard, Tyler Bailey, and Crystal Williams. Thank you again for all of your time and your insight.